Everybody, time is 6:43. I am calling to order the April 19th, 2023 Borough Council Voting Session. That was our call to order, and I'm moving on to our Pledge of Allegiance. And that was just item number two. Can I please have that led by Ms. Dorsey? Okay, thank you. I know, right? I forgot to put the gavel away. All right. All right, moving on to item number three, which is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. Are there any such comments? Okay. Moving on to item number four, which is comments by the Borough Council and Mayor, and we will start off with Mr. McCoy.
Good evening, everyone. Last month, Sean and I attended the Emergency Management Session at the Training Center. And coincidentally, the week after that was the large explosion in West Reading, which is where I'm from. And so it sort of reinforced the importance of people planning for that. That was, you know, just such a horrifying incident that I'm glad that we're part of that. On a lighter note, we got lots of good stuff coming up in the spring. Two weeks to Open Air Market and First Friday. We've got the Short Film Festival coming up next week. So if everyone gets out and enjoys it.
Thank you. Ms. Vaccaro.
Spring is here, and it's, the weather's beautiful. Stay outside, keep participating in everything, whether it's the Earth Day cleanup or the First Friday or the Film Festival this weekend. I'm very excited about everything. I'm looking forward to the streets being shut down again, and I hope everything keeps moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, and I just wanted to echo the same sentiments of my fellow colleagues here to come down to Westchester, spend your money in our great restaurants, and have a good time and be safe.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn.
Greetings from the sweetest word in the borough, the sixth ward. The only thing I want to remind people of is the fact that Election Day is coming up, and it's very important to make sure you do your hometown picks. We all have our favorites, and although I can't tell you mine from the dais, I can tell you that she could possibly be the sheriff. But the fact of the matter is, I think we should pay very much attention to the election coming up. And thank you for Parks and Rec, for the Easter egg hunt down at Everheart Park. I never saw Easter eggs picked up so fast. It's like two minutes for all the Easter eggs to be picked up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Thank you. I wanted to quickly recognize that we lost Alice Thomas since our last meeting, so I thought that was something that would be important for us to mention. She's definitely a pillar in our community, and she will be missed. And then I do agree that we should all enjoy spring and stay safe and enjoy the market as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey.
Thanks, Mr. Stefano. I wanted to echo everyone's comments up here. Spring has clearly sprung. There are lots of activities either happening or coming up shortly, whether it's Earth Day or the Open Air Market. Also want to acknowledge Mr. Allen for recognizing Alice Thomas and the contribution that she made to this community, families, generations of families, mine included, in Westchester. I also, just outside of Westchester, we have Pizza Produce, which I think many of us probably patronize, has recently been taken over by Farmer John, who is a woman who is leasing 100 or 120 acres of West Town property and is going, planning to turn it into an organic farm. There is an opening celebration this weekend, I think on Saturday, at 11:15. I hope we all can participate and support Farmer John.
Thank you. Mayor DiBattisti. Thank you. Yeah, I'm also extremely, I have a spring fever pretty bad, so I'm extremely excited for events that are happening in the community, for sure. I wanted to quickly congratulate, and I want to thank Sue Bain for bringing this to my attention, that how big of a deal it was that Kevin Gore was now a member of the Chesapeake Port of Directors for the Water Resource Authority. It's a really big deal and an incredible honor, and it's great to have our Billigan Housing Director be that person. So congrats to Kevin. And it was mentioned last night, but I just wanted to make sure everybody's clear on how big of a deal that is. So congrats, Kevin. I also want to, you know, Election Day is coming up, so please make sure you're involved. There are some local elections, like my seat next year will be primaries there, so it's important. And then last night, there was a long discussion. If anybody wasn't listening to the meeting last night or attending, there was a long discussion on short-term rentals, and this conversation is just getting started. So I want to just really encourage everybody again. I want to mention tonight again how important it is that the people listening are reaching out to your elected officials up here and giving your opinions and your thoughts on that, and asking questions as well, because that's going to be a big deal for the borough. And how we proceed with that is really going to start there. So make sure that you are reaching out to your elected officials. And that's it. Just a reminder for council that we have a lot of things assigned afterwards. So don't run away after reading's over, okay? Okay. All right. So moving on to item five, which is our discussion. We have a couple items on our discussion. A is to appoint boards commission committee members. If everybody's okay, I'd like to make a suggestion on appointment. Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I'll give you my recommendation, then we can make comments afterwards. So I would recommend for our Human Relations Commission, which we have two openings for, Sandra Ram, and it was Christopher Day. For Planning Commission, which we have one opening for, unfortunately, I would recommend Jim Cherry. For Sustainability, we have one opening. I would recommend Austin Ammon. I think I said his name right from last night. And then for our Library Board Directors, I would recommend Karen Myers. Those are my recommendations for appointments.
Make a motion to accept those recommendations.
Second.
Okay. All right. Motion is made and seconded to accept the appointments that I went over. Any further discussion, comments from anybody? Okay. Mr. Metric, would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. And I want to just thank everyone who interviewed. It's really a shame to not be able to, you know, to have people interview and not be able to use them for a position. You know, we really appreciate, we know how much of a time committed it is to volunteer your time and to want to serve the borough. So thank you to everybody who interviewed, and especially the people that weren't able to actually take a position. So, okay. Moving on to our second discussion item, which is B, which is approve the following purchases. We have B1 and 2. B1 is approved purchase of a dump truck. It's in the Public Works Department. Item B2 is approve purchase order and enter into a lease agreement with Enterprise for two patrol vehicles, and that's the Police Department. Mr. Metric, before we even begin, do we have to, we vote on these separately? Or because they're one and two, or if we just voted together?
You can vote on them separately.
Okay, well, then if we're going to vote on them separately, I would prefer if we just tackle one right now. How about we have discussion just based on B1? So that's for the dump truck. Is there any discussion on that? Okay. If there's no discussion, or anybody out there have a comment? Okay, or question? Okay. If there's no discussion, then I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to accept B1.
So moved.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Okay. Motion, Flynn, again, a second. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Mr. Metric, would you call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Uh, Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero, which brings us to item B2, which is the two police vehicles that we are entering into a lease agreement with Enterprise. Do we have a discussion on that or comments?
Uh, yeah, I'm, sorry, yeah, I put this on discussion. So I just know that last week at Finance and when we were budgeting, we had talked about purchasing as opposed to leasing. I personally am just a little bit skeptical about how Enterprise is planning to make money on doing this. I worry that that will be at our expense. I know that in the past with Enterprise, we've talked about the resulting fee being a little bit unpredictable until we get that 10-day window. Is this just a special situation where none of that is in play? Like, do we know for sure, like, these numbers are our numbers? I just wanted to clarify that first.
Yeah. For clarification, the lease schedule that was distributed last night is the pricing that Enterprise agrees to.
And last week in Finance, there was a smaller spreadsheet that broke down the costs over five years, and we were able to kind of compare dollars to dollars there. How has that math changed since last week?
Well, that math hasn't changed, but the conversation with Enterprise is that that math is only half of the picture, and that they want an opportunity to take more time with me to explain to me why Enterprise is a long-term, financially prudent decision to move forward with. So really what we're doing tonight is, or what council has before it, is a decision to enter into the lease of these two vehicles and give me a little more time so that when we get back to purchasing the next round of vehicles or leasing the next round of vehicles, which is going to happen soon, it's going to be in August, that we have some, we have these answers. We have answers to these questions, the questions stemming from exactly what we talked about in Finance last week, because that math has not changed.
And if we were to purchase instead of lease tonight, would that change any of the discussions that you are planning to have with Enterprise or any that we would have as council in August?
No, I'd still be sitting down with Enterprise. In fact, I think we're probably going to be talking in the next couple of weeks. So at least the dialogue will start in earnest very quickly, so I'll have plenty of time to ask the questions I need to ask.
So I guess from my point of view, then, we have the money in the budget to purchase these vehicles. We approved a budget to purchase the vehicles. To me, at least, it sounds like there's still some unanswered questions around whether or not leasing is going to be the best long-term choice for us. So I guess with all that in mind, for me, it makes sense to stick with what we know until we clear up some of those other answers, which we will do later, later this year.
So I just want to add a clarification. Mr. Allen, you're suggesting that we move forward with the lease or we move forward with a purchase?
I'm more comfortable with a purchase at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, go ahead.
Yeah, do we have a firm quote? I mean, because I don't want to hold up something, you know, for the Police Department that's a necessity. So if we were to do a purchase? Gotcha.
I'm in, I just want to, for the record, I'm in favor of approving item two and then giving the discretion to the Borough Manager to move forward and determine what is going to be best, whether it can be leasing certain cars or purchasing certain cars from a financial aspect.
Okay. Yeah, I, I. Um, I would agree with Mr. McGinnis. I think, I think I'm in favor of tonight approving this and to be added to the lease program. But, and I think the only reason I really feel that way is that I know that we can get out of it at any time, correct? Because I feel like I would love Mr. Metric, and I know he's going to do his due diligence and have Enterprise present and get the information that we need, knowing, moving forward if this is the right decision. So, you know, I'm in favor of agreeing to this tonight in terms of this, but I'm looking forward to more information going forward, whether or not this is the best decision in the long term. But if we couldn't get out of this, I might feel differently. But because we can, I'm okay with it tonight, so.
Thank you. I would also suggest, I think as Brian just did, that, Mr. Metric, look at the numbers and decide whether we should lease or purchase. And I thought that's what you said, to make the decision. You make the decision to lease or purchase. We have the car. You've worked the numbers both ways, and you know what actually provides the savings. We have both cars, so you know what actually provides the savings. I'm uncomfortable with going forward with Enterprise until you have done due diligence and have gotten all the information necessary, and at this point, we don't have it. Secondly, according to Barbara yesterday, our Finance Director, that money has already been budgeted for the purchase of two vehicles, as is the purchase of the dump truck. So why you would split the two and purchase the dump truck and not the two vehicles, I really don't understand, except for the fact that you have this lease agreement with Enterprise, but it doesn't affect that lease agreement that you have with Enterprise. We can still move forward with it. We lose nothing by purchasing these cars and having them long-term beyond five years. You know, my car is older than five years, and I know it's not the same comparison, but I think the life of some cars can be longer than five years. So I would suggest that, since we have it in the ARPA, I would say that we use the money that we have at hand, that we get the two cars, that you agreed to in the budget last year, and that you have the money for while we have the money for it. And that's, you've gone through all of this. We've gone through the whole, all of the ramifications of everything that's transpired. But I think we don't want to lose the fact and lose these vehicles. They need to be purchased while we have the money.
Mr. Stefano? The, oh, Ms. Vaccaro, you want to say something? Because I was going to ask Mr. Metric, as we're sitting here, to make a decision tonight. Because I know he knows what he wants to do, because he's already told us. And either we move forward or we do what we need to do, so.
I am only speaking to question the statement that we leave the decision up to Mr. Metric moving forward. Reading over some of the paperwork last night and trying to really understand what the purpose of council is versus management, I question that authority. I feel like we're in this conversation because that authority question was wavering. And I just want to make it really clear where that line is as to the decision-making. I'm not saying it should be on one side or the other. I just want to make it 100% clear.
Oh, I, in my opinion, I think we, the decision was made, right? It was made last year, it was budgeted. We approved that budget, so.
No, but that, that's not, I'm saying, yes, we need to do that. I, but, but we also need to make clear when the decision is brought to council and when the decision is not brought to council the next time. Because this has taken a really long chunk of time.
Yeah.
And I'm not exactly sure if we're clear on why.
Yeah, I agree. Um, yeah. Can I ask a clarifying question in terms of, just because they're police vehicles? Currently, are, do we have police vehicles currently that are in the lease program that we have and we're using?
Yeah, there are six police vehicles. Yeah, one detective, three admin, and two patrol.
Okay. That's good to know, just because I didn't want to set like a new press, like this is a new thing that we're doing. We already have vehicles that are in the lease program, okay.
Mr. Stefano, I just asked one more question. So both vehicles are as readily available, whether we purchased or leased, going back to the availability to the Police Department?
It's the same vehicle. They're sitting on a lot waiting to be outfitted in Lancaster. So the question is, do we fold them into our lease agreement? Which Enterprise is willing to do for us? Or do we?
Stefano?
Yeah, go ahead.
The question, please?
That's the question that I need Enterprise's help to demonstrate their long-term comprehensive value. Because when you look at it at a discrete purchase, it doesn't look like it's saving us money, like I talked about last week. So I want to have opportunity to have that conversation with Enterprise. And when we make the next round of vehicle purchasing, which we will, because we use vehicles and vehicles have a five-to-10-year shelf life in our fleet, we will be coming back to council in August and asking for an appropriation to spend money that's not budgeted. So you will see this. You will see vehicle purchasing in August, and I'm probably going to do that every year that I'm here, is have that conversation in August, because that's when we get our best pricing. And it's also pre, the budget hasn't been put together yet. So I can't, I can't encumber the borough on my own, or shouldn't encumber the borough on my own to buy five new vehicles without permission from council. That would be, that would be not okay.
Comfortable to go forward with a lease agreement until you understand the lease agreement. So I think that purchasing them, since that's what you voted on, that's what you agreed to, that's what you have the money for, would be the prudent thing to do. I know we have specialty vehicles at our business, which cost 100, over 100,000 each, and we certainly keep them longer than five years.
Okay. So I feel like the discussion has happened. At this point, I think it would be appropriate for somebody to make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase order and enter into a lease agreement for these two vehicles from Enterprise Leasing for Patrol and the Police Department.
Motion's on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion on the floor and seconded to accept B2. Any further discussion, any comments from the public? I didn't ask for comment yet. Okay. All right. Mr. Metric, would you call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
No.
Mr. McCoy?
No.
Ms. Dorsey?
No.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. What's the numbers there? What was it?
Four to three.
Four to three. Okay. So motion carries four to three. Okay. Moving on to item C, which is approving entering into a professional services agreement with Architectural Concepts Incorporated to provide architectural and engineering design services at the 20 South High Street, which is the Bicentennial Garage. I know Mr. Metric had, provided this information last night. Any new, anything else you want to add about that, Mr. Metric?
Well, since it was after nine, I'll maybe take 90 seconds or so to remind everyone why this is before you. First of all, we had this lease agreement, and, I mean, pardon me, we had this, we had this professional service agreement before us, and it honestly just fell through the cracks with the way things have been going the last few weeks in my absences. We have a chronic problem of water intrusion in our retail spaces at the High Street Garage. It's peculiar. It only happens in one of the retail spaces, for all intents and purposes. It doesn't make sense why it's just happening in one and not the others. And chasing leaks is one of the most frustrating things to do. So not only do we need some help with that emergent and immediate problem, I think it's worthwhile for the borough to retain the services of an architectural firm, like this one, to advise us on architectural questions that come up and to give us assessments of our facilities and grounds, and possibly in the future, it could mature into a deeper relationship. So we, we reached out to some local architects, asked them, who does this kind of work? We had a short list of people. Two of them came out to visit with us and do a site visit. And Architectural Concepts was the one that gave them, for me, from my point of view, the most compelling proposal. I am not going to spend a lot of money on this contract right away. We're probably long-term, for that matter, but I do need some à la carte services and help to get us through this leak problem, to get us through the next round of lease negotiations with this tenant, and to answer questions that we don't have the in-house expertise to do ourselves. I think it would be a huge help for us to have somebody we can call up and query about these things. So that's why I think it's a good idea.
When you mentioned with the tenant and, you know, going through like a lease renewal, how does, how does this specifically, the firm, affect that? I'm kind of confused about that.
Because of the way the lease is structured and the responsibilities of maintenance on the borough and the responsibilities of maintenance on the tenant, there needs to be a conversation about what we're going to do about the storefront. And there has, and that has to plug into negotiations and who's going to pay for it. And I want to be in a better position to bargain with that. And that is likely going to come up pretty soon, in the next three months, so.
Understood. Okay.
I have a question regarding hiring this firm. What is your anticipated cost? And number two, more importantly, is this cost already in the budget?
Those are both good questions. I would say I expect to spend less than $5,000 on this particular consultant in this year. And in our parking department budget, we have a line item for Professional Services. I believe it's titled 520007. And I'm stalling because Barb might actually know it off the top of her head, but there is money in there to help us pay for these kinds of things. We typically are going to structural engineers and, what are some of the other things that we? Yeah, the quick answer is yes, there's a budget line item. We can tell you the amount. I don't know it off the top of my head. $20,000. Thank you, Barb. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Mr. Metric, the, once we enter into the agreement with this architectural firm, will you be able to give them our? will you be able to give them our last year, last two years waterproofing records, so they can figure out whether the waterproofer did the appropriate job, or made some mistakes, or misses, or because it's, I know where the leak is, because it's, it's in the Swedish word in the borough, and the chocolate's too tart for me, so I don't eat it. But the, and the one piece of chocolate's $6, so I can't afford it. But the, the fact is, it's coming through the, the front of it, and I don't know whether our waterproofing guy waterproofed the ledges, you know, properly, or whatever.
All valid concerns. I have very high confidence that the work that the borough contracted for and was completed last year was done to the specifications in the bid and signed off on by somebody who knows what they're doing. I think that the, and so, and Mr. Cherry could elaborate on this too, if, from his site visit, we, we think there's another reason going on, reason for the problem. And we have some diagnostic pathways we want to take to figure out what's, what theory is right.
I just want to say, thank you for doing this. Thank you for reaching out for architectural support. I know that chasing leaks is a ridiculous job, and I have 12 guesses of where that came from. I've gone out and I've looked at that area and the damage, and I definitely cannot say anything detailed about it, but I do really appreciate that you've gone out and, and made some real effort to do something about this, and just thank you.
Are there discussion and comments from the public? Okay. That being the case, I think it would be appropriate for an emotion to approve item C on the discussion agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve entering into professional services agreement with Architectural Concepts to provide architectural and engineering design services at the 20 South High Street Bicentennial Garage.
And I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept item 5C. Any discussion? Nope. Okay. Mr. Metrick, would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro? Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy? Ms. Dorsey? And Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Sorry. All right. Okay. Motion carries seven zero, correct? Yep. Okay. And I think that's it for discussion. Yep. Okay. Item 6 is our consent agenda. Any issues with the consent agenda? Would be appropriate for a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda.
And I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept our consent agenda. Seeing no further discussion or comments from anyone, then please call the question, Mr. Metrick.
Mr. Flynn?
Yeah.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy? Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Under other business, we have announced the purpose of the April 19th executive session. We met in executive session prior to this to discuss a personnel issue with evaluation, a yearly evaluation for employee. Okay. Any other business? Mr. Medica?
Hello. I received a phone call the other day from a Mr. Stephen Douglas, who's with the Westchester Exchange Club. The organization donated this plaque to us. He was in the building the other day, and he feels that it needs to be retired. He'd like to provide the borough with a new plaque. No cost to the borough. The only issue would be the installation, which I believe our Public Works Department could handle. And he did ask if we could have a ceremony to install the plaque. Well, the plaque's in that little tiny room. I don't think we're all going to fit in there. So, my suggestion would be for Mr. Douglas to come to the June work session to have pictures taken and to provide us with a new plaque. And I was just wondering if everybody was okay with him doing that.
Yeah. How big, how big is it?
Um, it's...
I mean, is it like, it's not massive, right?
No, it's not. It's about the size of half of that small television.
All right. I, I think that's appropriate. And, yeah. I think that makes sense. Any other issues with that? Come to provide that? That'd be nice, so.
Yeah. We're a little bit busy in May, so I'm going to ask him to come in June to work.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. That's great. Thanks, Dana.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other business? Just Kevin, I mentioned, I gave you a little shout-out in the beginning, you weren't here. Just an extra congratulations, you know, you got looked over a little bit last night, but your appointment was a big deal, so congratulations on that, so. Yep. Okay. Seeing no other business, we are now adjourned. Thank you.